It's Monday, May 22, 2017. We're convening here at the Bennington Firehouse Facility. It's now a little past 6 o'clock, but I'd like to introduce myself as Tom Jacobs and my colleagues on the board. Jeanne, would you like to?
Good evening, everyone. Jean Connor.
Good evening, Carson Therber.
Jim Carroll.
Good evening, I'm Donald Campbell.
Hello, Chad Gordon.
Great. I think Stu?
Stuart Hurd, town manager, just sat down.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he's a moving target here today.
I know. And Nancy Lively is our recording secretary.
That's right. Super sub, that we have said.
The super sub, that's right.
Thank you, Nancy. I think we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance if you can lead us, Carson, in that.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Carson. We have our consent agenda, the minutes from our last meeting, May 8, 2017, and the warrants which have been circulated to all of us, and I've had the opportunity to review as well. Could I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Come on.
And a second. Other discussion on the consent agenda. Any questions, comments, or ready to move?
No comments.
So, having no further comments or discussion, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
That's six in favor and no opposition. I should note that Jeanne Jenkins is absent today, she's away. We have a citizens' comment period. We have two individuals who have signed the comment sheet sign up, and the first is our representative, Mary Morrissey. Mary, would you like to come up, sit down, get comfortable?
Oh, I don't want to get too comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, it's that kind of a night, though.
We should have snacks at that table.
Snacks? I would want to hear that, too.
Wow.
Thanks, Mary.
Snacks at the table, that would be interesting. I was here a month ago in regards to water issues in the community. At that time, I had talked to you as not only the select board, but also as the other hat you wear, which is the water board. Unfortunately, since then, there wasn't much information that came back to what the plan is going forward with many of the priority issues for Bennington. And unfortunately, we have now received a fine in regards to our treatment plan, which is most unfortunate. So I'm back before you good folks to see what you are working on as far as plans going forward. I did see in today's paper, I know you're talking later about the bond vote that will be in October, which, as I stated, unfortunately, there could have been money statewide and possibly federally, except for we didn't do the bond vote. And that, again, was a concern of mine at the last meeting that I was here.
So... Those are, you know, really good thoughts, and remember our discussion, and it probably is appropriate as we get, we've got to have an agenda discussion on the priorities and where we're at.
Well, I think at that time, I, you know, had certainly asked for that, as, you know, I know I had mentioned the priority list that the town had given the state, and I know the PFOA issue is kind of a different nut to crack because of the different pieces with it. But, I mean, you have significant issues, and not to reiterate from a month ago, but you've got almost including the PFOA system improvements at $25 million. You've got the South End grades, final piece, $3.5 million. The Gage Street East main upgrade, $1 million. North Street replacement, $1.2. Chapel Road tank replacement, $3 million. Replace all lead service lines in Bennington, and I've had a number of questions since I read that, and it's on the state list, so this isn't a list I made up, is that people have said they've heard time and time again over the last several years that all of our lead lines have been replaced. So people are wanting some understanding of what that is, but that's got a $10 million price tag. The treatment plant upgrades is $15 millions, and then a PRV SCADA connection on Burgess Road tank at $300,000. That is close to $60 million of projects, and I was asking, you know, is there a plan? And I would hope that at some point, there would be an agenda that folks could talk about it. I guess I'm concerned, I couldn't tell because of the way the banner wrote it today, are we looking for a $6 million bond for the October vote?
I think, Stu, could you respond?
I'd like to just try and clarify here. What happened is the congressional delegation at the federal level and the state, at the state level, water quality and water resources asked us for a list of projects that we might be looking at into the future. Not that we're going to try to do all of that right now, but what is available? Because if you recall, President Trump promised a massive infrastructure bill. Senator Sanders has been supportive of a massive infrastructure bill, and they were looking for a list of how much is out there.
Right. I'm very well aware.
That's where those projects came from, Mary. Mary, please, can I finish?
But I'm very well aware.
May I finish?
Sure.
So that was a list of projects that we have for the future. For the current time, we have a $300,000 project we're contemplating as part of the South End water tank, which in effect has been completed. That $3.5 million was a $3 million bond. Project cost $2.9 million. We're planning to continue to extend those lines so we can correct the pressure difficulties we have in the higher elevations around Jefferson Heights and Crescent Boulevard. That will be in FY '18 budget that these folks will be reviewing probably next month. And the bond for the wastewater treatment upgrade will probably be in the $9.5 million range. And the state has $60 million, I believe, available for wastewater treatment plant programs because there haven't been many programs coming forward over the years. So there is plenty of money set aside for us to produce the borrowing that we need from the state water resources project list, and that's at a 3%. And some of our project may have to go to the bond bank because the agency will look at it, because we're trying to do some of it in-house. The agency might say, well, you need to take that to the bond bank, and we're prepared to do so. And we think we will, should the voters approve, a $9.5 million bond in October, we will then begin construction probably in the spring.
Right. And so that, my question, though, was the concern when seeing in the paper, $6 million, you're now saying $9 million, possibly $9 million?
Actually, when it was first reviewed in 2011, it was $17 million.
I remember that, and that's why I was surprised, that's why I'm asking what the different numbers are, because the banner had $6 today.
Well, there's the...
And my understanding was $9, and the treatment plan is for $15 million.
The, to do the entire plant at one time would probably cost in the realm of $12 to $13 million. We don't think $15 is as far as it needs to go. But we're looking at the priority projects that will bring the plant back into complete and full compliance. We are currently in compliance, but we're working very hard with older equipment to keep it there. So this will upgrade the RBCs, this will upgrade the secondary digester, the primary digesters, and improve controls within the plant and beyond by using some of the upgraded technologies that were not available to us 30 years ago.
So the $15,000 fine was for what, if we're in compliance?
The $15,000 fine was because we were not in compliance last summer. We signed an assurance of discontinuance. $3,750 of that goes to the agency as a fine. The other $11,000 goes to a local water quality project that we must pitch to the state, and we are working with the Soil Conservation Service, or what's their name now, they're no longer, Shelley Sales and her group, the Conservation...
The Bennington County Conservation District.
There you go. We're working with them to provide a project to the state for their approval.
And are we likely, or will we not, will we be free of any further fines before our bond vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Our plan is fully operational now, we have all of our processes up and running, and they're functioning very well. Should we not pass the bond vote, we may in fact end up facing fines because of our non-compliance with the assurance of discontinuance.
Right. One other last question, I'm sorry, I probably have taken my time, is a number of questions have been out there in regards to all the bond monies that we have out there. So there is there, obviously, this one coming forward, and are we still paying for the FEMA money back, or was that a bond?
Yes. That is a general fund obligation, yes, we're paying that.
Right. And so if you could, if that could be reported also, or do we still have a bond on the tank, the water tank that's at the Southern Vermont College, did, we did the bond vote for that?
Yeah, those payments begin in FY '18.
And the total on that was what?
Pardon me?
The total on that one was what?
Just under $3 million.
Okay.
$2.9 million.
FEMA, how much are we still paying?
FEMA was $1.3 million.
Okay. And then with the recent bond of the Highway Department, that was, and forgive me...
That was $3.00, $3.2 million.
We can have all of that, because I've seen the report and...
One last point, if I could.
Okay. You know, this is not an agenda?
I know.
And I think we want to get this on the agenda when the, I think the engineering work is being done.
And it will be.
Yeah.
It will be. But I just want to comment on the lead line replacement. There are no lead water mains in the town of Bennington. The lead lines that remain are all private service lines that serve the homeowners. We just received an $80,000 grant from the state of Vermont to develop a process where we can identify those lines, and ultimately, we believe that EPA will come up with a program of replacement, frankly, due to what happened in Flint, Michigan. But I think that now the national, well, we have to hold our breath when it comes to what happened, will happen nationally with this particular administration. But the plan was, is that there would be monies available to us from EPA that would allow us to go out and assist homeowners in replacing their lead service lines. There are no lead water mains at all in this community.
Right. But how are they attached to the main water lines? I mean, they are attached, so technically...
It may be, it may be that the lead service comes to a shut-off, which then becomes copper. It may be that the lead service comes to a shut-off, which then becomes galvanized. It may be that it comes to a shut-off, which is then lead.
Right.
But there are no lead water mains. They're all related to service, to homes. And we've been, for years, attempting to replace them when we find them, but the homeowner needs to contribute.
Is the water treated also?
Well, the water is treated to reduce lead and copper leaching into homes, and that has been very effective. But that's, I think, the issue that people are concerned about, is is my water service line lead, and am I being negatively impacted? And I think at the present time, they're not, because we are treating the water that comes into the lines. But ultimately, the best protection is to remove them.
Right. So the one last thing that I had to ask is that folks, I guess state, is folks have been concerned with, you know, the amount of owing back in bonds and debt. They were, have also concerned, though this isn't your part to be concerned about, but with the $4 million bond at the school level for the improvements of energy efficiency and all of that. So I think at some point, I would request that an agenda item is put on, that you folks can, as the water board, be making a report to the community on some of the very pieces that Stuart has spoken about, so that people have an understanding, because I've had a number of questions come back in regards to it. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate that, too. We will follow up, you'll be first to know when we get that set up on the agenda, because we get a lot of the information relative to bonding, you can see that in our reports, but it would be helpful if the community has that information, too, because the October, you know, will come faster than we would like. There's a lot of education to be done on a lot of parts and stuff. If we can, that is a priority, and that's got to be addressed by the community as well, because we expect the community to be fully informed and educated for that ballot day. We have the Rescue Squad?
Force.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So you're saving me having to...
Pardon?
Remember the meeting today relative to all of the good celebration that this was...
Absolutely. I just wanted to come and give an official, quick one-minute update. We had a couple folks that were, Jeanne and Tom, joined us today. I alluded to a big announcement that we had today. In interim, since the last time I talked to you folks, we actually had two announcements today, which were both absolutely awesome. The first one is one of the paramedics with Bennington Rescue, Michael Condon, was selected by the Vermont Office of EMS as the ALS Provider of the Year. So it's only given out to one person in Vermont every year, so that is quite an honor for someone here right in Bennington. And that was the surprise, that was the thing that we didn't know about. The thing that we did know about with a little bit of leeway that we announced today was Bennington Rescue was the recipient of the 2017 Mission Lifeline Gold Plus Award. So what that means is, if you guys all happen to remember, back to last May, Bennington Rescue won the Silver Award. So that is the highest anybody had ever gotten in Vermont prior to today. And due to our continued perseverance with identifying and treating heart attack victims, we have achieved levels that have never been achieved before in Vermont, so we got the Gold Plus Award. And it was a tremendous honor for us, want to let you guys know about it. And the true beneficiaries of all of this hard work is our citizens and the folks in our areas that receive this care. You know, it's a partnership between us, SVMC, St. Peter's Health Partners over in New York, our dispatch agencies, Mission Lifeline, all of that stuff, all comes together to have true systems of care, which ultimately is the beneficiary of that, is the patient. So, good news, and that's all I need.
Great news, and, you know, I don't know where we go from here. Is it platinum next year?
I don't think so, but we will find something, we will continue to improve and continue to provide excellent service and quality care, so.
The squad is to be congratulated, and it certainly will reflect that. And thanks for visiting with us tonight, because without the squad, without the services that you bring to the communities that are served, we would not be the quality of community that we have. Thanks for...
Thank you. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. We have property sales to talk about tonight there, Stuart.
Yes. I'm going to take, actually, the Woodlot proposal, proposed sale, and the tax sale acquired properties, that's what I'll discuss, and then I'll turn it over to Mike McDonough, you have a memorandum from him, and how we might deal with the two highway garage properties when the time is appropriate. As you know, in June, those properties, and I think there were four, that we acquired at tax sale last year, will either be redeemed, or they will become the property of the town of Bennington through a tax collector's deed. Obviously, we're not in the business of home rental or homeownership, so we are looking to come up with a proposal and acceptance from the board as to how we dispose of these properties. And we are proposing to dispose of them at individual public bid processes. So each property will have a separate public bid, sealed bids, rather than a public auction that would be submitted on each property. I think the only caveat is, the minimum bid would of course be the property, delinquent property tax, and whatever legal fees have accrued that would be due. But there may be some of these properties that frankly will not generate a bid to cover the taxes. They have deteriorated over time, they were abandoned long before they were sold, so I'm looking for at least consensus from the board that as the tax collector, I would be allowed to accept the highest bid on these properties, even though that bid may not cover the entire delinquency. So that's one thing I would be looking for from, on those particular sales. Otherwise, as each bid process is accepted, we would then be coming back to you where we would announce the intent to convey. That announcement requires then a 30-day notice. We announce it at a public meeting, a 30-day notice, wherein the taxpayers, if they feel aggrieved by the process or by the proposal, can then petition to object to the proposal. But every time a town wishes to convey property that it has obtained, we must go through that conveyance process. So it's a public process, everybody will know, that participates in the bid, they'll know at the time who the high bidder is and who the likely successful bidder is. But it will take that public process to come back to you and say, on this particular property, it's this individual, and this is the bid, do you agree that we intend to convey? So the board will have a say on each one of those.
How do you go about advertising for that sale process?
We'll do, we'll do a bid both on the website, we'll use the local media to the extent that we can, and try to ensure that people are aware that these properties, we'll give them plenty of notice, so, because we're going to have to, assuming that we, that none of them are redeemed, we're going to probably change the locks, we're going to have to be able to allow people to get into the buildings and take a walk-through. So it'll be a process that will develop over the summer, but hopefully by the fall, we'll be into a real active mode to unload those properties.
As far as the assessed value, so that people who want to make a bid on these properties, that public knowledge with those...
Of course.
Yeah. And with respect to the two town garages, have they been assessed? Because they're town-owned, they're not...
Actually, several years ago, the state passed a law which said that all tax-exempt property needs to have a value applied to it. So more than likely, I don't know that John's gotten through every single property that is tax-exempt in the community, but I think more than likely, there is a value on those garages. I don't know that off the top of my head, but that would be known and made public as well.
So the town at this point is more interested in selling them than using them for town purposes, like more parking space?
Well, we'll talk about that when we get to the town garages, because the downtown property, the Depot Street property, has that potential, but there's a cost associated with that, and you have to weigh whether that costs to create...
Is there a test parking?
Well, there may be. But we'll talk about that when we get there, okay?
Okay.
If that's all right?
I just have a question, and you may not know the answer. As far as the Woodlot?
We're coming to that. I think we're going to do just this first part.
Yes, if we can, if I can get a consensus from you that that's an appropriate process to follow, I'd like to...
May I ask about that?
Please.
Stuart, I understand, I think I understand what you're asking for, but is there some other alternative minimum we could look at? So we wouldn't want these properties selling for a dollar, right? Is there some other, if not the minimum bid of the taxes due, could we do 50% of the taxes due, or is there some other minimum that would help you? Or do you really want to be able to sell it for whatever you can get for?
Well, I think, yeah, obviously, I don't think that we would be, I mean, as the tax collector, and the delinquent tax collector, I'm not going to be accepting a dollar for these properties. They obviously have a low-end value. More than likely, I will confer with our chief assessor, John Antononi, and go into the process, understanding in my head what probably the value, the value of the property is, and see if we approach that. Because some of these have been devalued over time. Some are in pretty good shape, but, so, I don't think I need that kind of specific instruction on each parcel, but believe me, I'll be trying to get as much of those dollars back for the community as I possibly can.
Is there a minimum bid that you have in mind for these?
The minimum bid is the taxes due.
Okay, well, there's no taxes due on the garages?
No, I'm not talking about the garages yet.
We're not there yet.
But this is just on the delinquent tax properties that we acquired. And so there is a minimum bid there. We just may not be able to reach it because of some of the damages that have happened.
I'd certainly be satisfied if you worked with John to figure out what the property was actually worth, and try to work towards that number. It feels like you would be covering your...
That would be my goal.
It would be tidy, if you could do that, that'd be great. Before we go on to the next...
We need to get two sentences.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I just want to let, I just want to let people know that I'm going to be, end up recusing on some of these things. Because of the land trust, I have a conflict, Stuart, on the Woodlot, so I'm not going to be part of that conversation. And when we get to the Depot Street garage, I'm also going to stay out of that one, because with the farmer's market, I'm trying to work on some possibilities there. So I'm not going to be talking about any of those projects.
But let's, what do you need from us relative to...
I think just consensus that we're...
I was just curious if, does the people making the bids, do they have to show, like, preapproval, or that they have the ability to pay, that if we...
Yes.
They do, so we don't get, like, could we accept a second bid if that first person isn't approved?
Right. We would probably set it up looking for at least a minimum down payment at sale, and then the rest within five days. Generally, that's the way we handle tax sales. You have to put so many dollars down, and then you have to show us the rest of it within five days, otherwise the sale is voided.
Just five days? That seems short, but that, as it works, it works.
It does, it tends to work.
So Tom, are you ready for a motion to let our town manager dispose of these properties best to visibility, and to go below the minimum bid of taxes due if necessary?
Discussion now. Any further questions, Stuart? Because, again, you come back to us.
It does come back to you.
Right.
In a public process where you have to approve the conveyance.
Yep. But at least it'll give you the ability to get it off, and the timeline for that, if they redent them, so.
Well, I'd like to believe that we could pull it off and have most of these properties sold by mid-September, and be back to you in that timeframe. I think it will take us some time to take a look at each property, get it ready for sale, understand what the new assessed value should be, and then get it out to bid with enough time to give people time to see the property and everything. So I'm thinking mid-September would probably be about as fast as we can get back to you.
Is there going to be a broker involved in this?
Not at this time. We don't plan to use a broker.
Anything else, Chad and Tom?
You should let Jim know what the motion is. Just, we just...
Stuart, I guess, right, you're away. Could you read the motion, Nancy, just so that I...
That Stuart has the authorization to accept the highest bid, even if it is less than the taxes that are due on the board back.
Having in mind, it's still going to come back to the board for ultimate final...
For each approval?
Every property would have to come back before it can be conveyed.
Okay, we're, I'm ready to vote? All in favor? Six in favor, and no abstentions.
Great.
Now we can now go to the Woodlot?
The Woodlot. This 44.4 acre parcel, which is actually shown on the map I provided, is 47 acres. It gives you an idea of what we generally run into with parcels that are, have long been in ownership and long before surveys were actually being performed. It has a value currently of around $76,600. I just received word today that the final checks have come in from the logging operation. The town obtained $128,000 and change from the sale of the wood on this parcel. And my proposal here is that because it is landlocked, and our access to the property has been subject to the approval by private landowners, they've allowed us to get in there, it's really not clear that we have actually deeded access to this lot. This was a woodlot that was planted during the WPA days in the '30s, and so it was a stand of red pine, white pine, all kinds of different pines, softwood. We were very fortunate to have the bidders and work with the CDC folks to be able to remove the undergrowth, which was strangling a lot of the trees, it was bittersweet, it was pretty bad condition, and be able to actually generate as much income as we did. And that income goes into our capital facilities reserve automatically based on prior board decision. So now I'm proposing that we advertise this property and bid it to the adjoining property owners. We've had two adjoiningers that have expressed an interest in the property. I would propose that we bid it and see what interest we have from them. To go out to a big public sale, I think would be difficult, because we don't have clear and concise easement rights to the property. So that would be my... We've had two adjoiningers that have expressed an interest in the property. I would propose that we bid it and see what interest we have from them. To go out to a big public sale, I think would be difficult, because we don't have clear and concise easement rights to the property. So that would be my proposal, it would be to the highest qualified bidder, and most likely an adjoininger that would be the ones bidding.
The property owners that are adjoining have access?
They both have access, at least the two that have contacted me are directly about the property, so they would have access.
Are they interested in the entire property, each of them mutually, or...
From what they've told me, yes, they're interested in the whole parcel, and more than likely for protection.
In the protection?
Protection, they don't want somebody else doing it.
I see. And the hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that was generated in sales of the wood, for what period of time was that?
That was over this past winter.
But is this the second time that it's been harvested?
We actually, we attempted to bring a forester, county forester into the parcel back when Jim White was the county forester, and it was so overgrown with bittersweet, that he suggested we first remove the bittersweet before we tried to even log it. And of course, we didn't have the manpower at that time to do it, we didn't obviously think about using CDC, but because the CDC was available, and Dave Dents was one of the loggers that was in here, and he is the instructor at the CDC, we were able to bring them in, and it became an educational opportunity for them to help us clear the land, so at least we could get the wood out. Some of it wasn't in very good shape, because of the, the bittersweet tends to strangle the trees from below.
So this hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, really, for all intents and purposes, was pure profit, because the CDC was involved?
That's, that's correct. Well, it's not pure profit, I mean, we did, yeah, yes, but those are, those are the funds that were generated from the logging operation.
And the students got real world experience?
They should have, yes. I would not have wanted to be in there.
Pardon me?
I wouldn't have wanted to be in there. Bittersweet is tough stuff.
Nice, that's a good job. You don't find a hundred and twenty-five, twenty-eight thousand dollars laying around in the town, Mary Ann?
No, generally not.
Good job.
Jack?
Well, sounds good.
You're, excuse me, recusing or refusing?
Yeah, okay.
I just had a question, so we can, we obviously can not open it up to the public to bid on it?
That's correct, we can.
We can, okay, that was my question.
The board gets involved in the actual conveyance. Should we, should we have a successful bid operation with adjoining property owners, who I think are realistically the best, the best outcome would be to have one of them acquire it. It would then come to you to approve the conveyance, and if you're not satisfied with the process or the bids, you could always say, no, thank you.
I just didn't wanna, didn't, wanted to make sure it didn't have to be public.
It doesn't have to be.
So you said there, there's two landowners that are interested, are there, are there multiple?
There may be a third abutter, I think one of the property owners owns on two sides.
I would just suggest if we could just offer it to all of them, you know, and then...
We'll notify them all.
And then they won't, you know, someone comes to the table late, it's just nice for them to have a...
We'll make sure that we get all of the abutters to have an opportunity there.
One final question for you, Stu, whose idea was it to involve CDC?
It actually was Dave Dents' idea. We, we were approached by Dave...
And tell me who Dave Dents is?
He's the instructor at the CDC for the logging and forestry operation.
How did he become aware of it?
We were, we were talking with, with a number of loggers about other parcels of land that we have, that we are attempting to log, and we are currently actually exploring the four hundred and twenty acres we have up in Ponell, Woodford, and Stamford. It's called the Fay Rudd lot, and that is a lot of old hardwood, that will, and the county foresters, the new county foresters up in there, I don't know what you call it, they're surveying the lot to see what kind of trees and what kind of value there might be there, and we're attempting to acquire better access to the site in that particular case.
Other questions? You would like a motion?
Yes, I would, please.
Accept a motion from anyone that would like to make it, put the motion. Authorizing Stu to enter into a bidding process towards the sale of the wood lots, conditioned upon the select board's ultimate approval?
I probably wouldn't have been able to battle that off like you did, so, yes.
That's first.
I'll second it.
Second, more discussions? Okay, all in favor, signify my eye, six in favor, and no abstentions.
I'm gonna, I'm staying.
I'm sorry, five. Sitting right next to you, I'm sorry about that.
All right, and the last piece, I would invite Mike Vicdonna to the, to the table there, just as a preliminary. Mike, in fact, had the idea that this might be an interesting way to dispose of this property. I can tell you that we have been contacted by some interested property owners, I mean, interested people who might want to acquire the property for use. So Mike came up with the idea that maybe we approach this with a request for proposals, more of a public idea process, and I'll let Mike take it from there.
So continuing the theme of property disposition, as Stuart mentioned, we began talking at two oh five about what comes after the move of Highway to the new Bone Road facility. And we thought it was important that we be proactive in understanding the ins and outs of those two properties, and what opportunities might be available, not only to the town, but to the community, be it in a public fashion, or for a entrepreneur or property developer within the community. I began in my memo by bringing this back a few years, when the Downtown Alliance Design Committee sponsored a study of the Depot Street garage. And our intent at that time, understanding that the life of the garage is a functioning facility for the town, was limited. We wanted to sort of think about what might happen at that very key downtown property. It's key in many ways, and key in terms of the varied potentials that it, that it might have. And so with the help of, as we noted in the memo, with the help of an architectural student who was formerly from Bennington, and was studying in New York City, he was able to turn this idea of assessing a design solution for the Depot Street garage into a course, into course credit. And so with the, working with the design committee, and with the design committee sort of working with him to ascertain what might be an interesting, but also feasible look at what the garage might be, a proposal for an art center was developed. And that proposal was presented to the board, to a previous board at the time of its completion. And we noted then, and we know now, that the intent of that exercise was not to push for that as a solution to the Depot Street garage, but to generate excitement about the potential of the property. Because it sort of has an obvious future, that I think has been on everyone's mind, but we think that there are others as well. And so I'll focus initially on the Depot Street property, and then we'll move to the Orchard Road facility. Jim had noted the, that obvious option was the possibility of demolishing the structure and enlarging the North Street, Depot Street parking lot. And so just as my way of analysis for you on that, there are sixty-nine spaces currently in that lot, that lot is very often at capacity, and I mentioned the three principal entities abutting the lot that cede to its heavy use. And some time ago, an analysis was done of what additional parking could be added, were the garage not there. And that could result in thirty-seven, thirty-four spaces, for a total of, a grand total of a hundred and three, up from the sixty-nine. Now, we did develop some reasonably hard numbers for that option, but there is a soft component in here. But working with RJ and Highway, and with Larry McLeod and Facilities, we determined that the demolition, and we saw it, an outside quote on this particular aspect, demolition of the building, the removal of building materials, slab and frost walls, but not including asbestos removal, would amount to thirty-eight thousand dollars. It was suggested that the possibility of asbestos, I don't want to use the word probability at this point, but the possibility of asbestos within that building would likely double, or could even exceed doubling that cost. So we've noted a potential range of demolition between thirty-eight and seventy-six thousand dollars. The construction of new parking areas, driveways, and curbing, with the work and gravel subbase provided by the Highway Department, would be nineteen thousand, three hundred dollars, for a total cost of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars slash ninety-five thousand, three hundred dollars, depending on the possibility of asbestos removal being involved with the demolition. And so that raises the basic question of whether those thirty-four spaces were a reasonable target for the investment of fifty-seven to ninety-five thousand dollars. Now, there's no...
The price per space, do you, if you break it down that way?
Well, it'd be thirty-four spaces at fifty-seven or ninety-five, I can pull out my calculator.
Two to three thousand dollars a space?
Yeah.
How much? Two to three thousand dollars a space, it looks like.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Thank you.
So it fits into the grander question of parking, particularly in light of the Putnam redevelopment. And so it would, it would solve a problem that exists currently at that site, it would, it would probably not contribute positively to the grander parking scheme and solutions that will be studied as a component of the Putnam redevelopment. And so to a certain extent, at least in my mind, it takes some of the edge off the value of the additional parking in that lot. One other aspect of that lot that we noted in the memo is its proximity to the gateway, the western gateway into downtown. And what we might be confronted with here are two options. One would be that part of the viewer vista that one arrives at when coming into Bennington from the west would be that of a parking lot, versus the possibility of a refurbished functioning structure that might be an attraction to people coming into Bennington. And so I should have prefaced all of this by saying is that we're, we're asking the select board this evening for your thoughts and your observations, and if you are so inclined, perhaps to authorize us to move in any one of these directions, and bring the results of that process back to the board. And so we outlined, excuse me, we outlined three options, two are related. The first two involve retention of ownership by the town, and the third would be, would involve making the property available outside of town ownership, and I'll describe the third one separately. But the first was to consider retention of ownership, rehabilitation by the town, and lease for an adaptive reuse. And that offers some advantages in terms of the possibility of a use not being tied to purchase and ownership, with the town retaining ownership and providing the property for lease. It might make it more accessible to community organizations and private nonprofit organizations to consider the use of the building. We do note that there is an estimate, or has been an estimate, for the cost of the base repairs that the building is in need of, which includes window replacement, exterior repair, the exterior finish on the walls, roof replacement, new overhead and entry doors, and electrical upgrades totaling approximately a hundred and three thousand dollars. And so in that particular option, the town would make that investment, and would make the property available for use by an outside entity or agency. The, the second bullet is simply a modification or a different approach on the retention side, which would be to lease it as is for adaptive use. And that would involve an investment on the part of the leasing to upgrade the facility. It has one advantage, is that those upgrades could be targeted to the prospective use that that lessee is contemplating. The third option that we're proposing this evening, and Stuart prefaced somewhat our excitement and the potential that might exist here, would be to take what we've described as a potential value-added approach with greater impact on the community, the economy, and especially on the coattails of the Putnam project. What we would do under this scenario would be to establish criteria for the use of the building. That criteria might involve creation of jobs, that criteria might involve impact on the community, impact on the neighborhood, it might involve, in the instance of a private nonprofit, perhaps the services that might be rendered to the community from that site, or in the instance of an art center, the impact on the community arts life that that facility might offer. And so with, with the development of that criteria, the property would be assessed, and we would request proposals, not bids, but proposals from anyone who had interest in the property. The proposals would respond to our specific criteria, as I mentioned some examples of. And then either the select board, or a body appointed by the select board, would jury those proposals, and either select one that felt the most promising to the community, or the town would reserve the option of rejecting any proposals that it felt didn't meet the standards and requirements of the community. If it was a private, private entrepreneurial proposal, certainly a business plan would be a part of the response to the RFP. And so if, if we think, and I think that from a, a planning process, if we think that that might be an appropriate way to proceed with this property, we would be prepared to begin to develop the criteria and the protocol and process for that RFP plan. And we could stop here and perhaps focus on Depot Street before we move on to Orchard Road.
Yeah, yeah. Let's go right to anybody's...
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Carson.
I'm gonna start. The delivery of information here is so clear and concise, it almost takes the fun out of what I kind of am hearing in option number three. And I say fun, because there's a really strong entrepreneurial kind of wave that runs through option number three there, and it makes me think of, and I'll use the word contest, because that's essentially what it was.
Yes.
There's a successful story slash business venture that was out there, I want to say woman, put on the internet, you know, win my bed and breakfast kind of approach, and we're looking for creative talent in this community, creative businesses to come in, whether it be for profit, not-for-profit, check one of the boxes, but option C that you're proposing, and the information you put down here is, as you always do, is incredibly clear, it's easy to follow, but if we weave in some... But if we weave in some marketing to this option C, you really could make this a pretty exciting opportunity for, for someone or something to come in and, you know, launch a new business and, you know, win your new building or something along those lines where you're, you're presented with a great opportunity. And I, I know the way you're, you're delivering it to us, it's not that is exciting and captivating, but the roots are all right there to, to find a really interesting marketing pitch to this for the town.
Mm-hmm.
And as we launch Hotel, you know, the Hotel Putnam and the Putnam Block redevelopment, this could be, you know, aligned right with that. You know, you could say it's a crummy old building, let's tear it down and make parking spots, that's option A there. But I, I just think option C, there, there's more to the story there that could be, could be pretty interesting.
I, I think one of the things that's predicated on is that I wouldn't presuppose in any way to suggest that I could sit down and list all the possibilities that might, we might be confronted with, and confronted in a very positive way.
Yeah, I think that's the fun part. You never know if someone's going to come along and do.
Exactly. Don't know. That's right.
Or, or suggest doing.
That's right.
Thanks, Carson. Please, let's see.
What's the age of the building? I'm just curious.
Uh, I think it was built in the late forties, fifties.
Okay.
No, it must have been in the forties.
Okay.
I would guess the forties.
Okay, I was just curious about that. I think that's a great, I, I'm getting, I love these kinds of projects, I think they're very exciting. I do worry a little bit, and it was to be avoided, is another old middle school situation where someone came in and bought the building and had grandiose ideas and they never came to fruition and, you know, now look what we have. So, I was just, you know, I'm not assuming that would happen and I don't mean to be negative at all, but we don't need another eyesore downtown.
No, we don't.
And, and, no, and, um-
We have one now, that's what we're trying to talk about.
Yeah, yeah. And as far as parking, what, is there a plan? Is there anything in, going on behind the scenes with the Tuttles lot? Because for, for parking?
There is no-
I have any control.
There's no active planning that we're involved in. I think the reality is-
It's privately owned, it's privately owned?
Yes.
Okay.
The reality is that any redevelopment of the Tuttles property would require investment in parking. Oftentimes municipalities do get involved in that infrastructure component and rah-rah, we, we have the opportunity for TIF should the, the vote come out in the end, the way everyone expects it to. And so, parking is, is always going to be a component of any redevelopment piece that we are looking at. And I, I think that what it comes down to are thirty-four spaces going to make or break any subsequent major redevelopment that, that we might see in our downtown.
That's all I have.
Yeah.
The renderings that you provided us, Mike, are really exciting and very attractive. With respect to Genie's remarks about parking, I think the logical use of this is going to be art space. And the art space would most likely be used during the evening hours. Is that a safe assumption to make?
Well, my inclination would not be to make assumptions. You know, an arts facility could have, could have a, you know, viable daytime aspect. We already have arts facilities within the downtown that are open day and night.
It certainly is a unique architectural, is there a name for it, Mike? For this particular?
Oh, the proposer named it the Bennington Art Shed or BAS. But, you know, there was, that was just on the whim of the, of the architect.
Almost looks like, reminds me of airplane hangars.
Well, yes, yeah, yeah. I, I think that the important thing is if we were to be so inclined to seek proposals from the outside, we're going at this with a complete open mind. And any number of proposals could, could rise to the level of, that's the best idea we've heard.
Well, I just want to say that I certainly, along with Carson and Genie endorse the third option.
Carson.
I, I agree, the third option seems like a no-brainer, especially with the expense of the possible first option, to spend that much for thirty-four spaces doesn't seem like it'll be worth it. If we were to put in an RFP, would we, what would be the turnaround, sixty days, ninety days?
Uh, I, a minimum of thirty days, but, but certainly sixty would be reasonable.
Okay.
But I, you know, it would not be unrealistic if, if we wanted to accelerate this for proposers to, to develop their ideas and their cost analysis within thirty days. But I think sixty would be more reasonable.
I think you teed us up by giving us the first two, pointed us right to the third.
Yeah, I've done this before.
The, the essence of it is I'd really be concerned, as we all are, with putting any more capital into this building.
Yep.
The part that I, I would like to see this so it becomes on the tax rolls so that we get, we generate, because I was hoping with these town garages that, that would get onto the grand list and the taxpayer consideration. It's not that the not-for-profits couldn't benefit by some activity there, but I do feel that when we do this RFP, I know personally that I'm going to examine it real close to make sure that we're going to get a return of the, of the investment, because the ROI is really what we need to do with these structures along with some of the other real estate that we're dealing with. So, I don't think there is a great rush. I'd rather develop a program or process and have it really thought out by management, coming back to the board, because I don't think they're going to be even leaving the facility until October, right?
We won't be moving out of, out of these facilities probably until, realistically, on the, on the accelerated timeframe, October. That's the accelerated timeframe. So, we have time to, I think, if, if the board desires for us to focus on these two properties in similar fashion, we have time to put together the criteria, keep you all involved in the process as we develop it, so that when we're, when we're confident that we have a process that will work, certainly bring it back to you and make it public in that regard, and then throw it out there and see what happens.
Because the way I see this project, it's a whiteboard, you know, totally blank. Let's see that we can make something exciting for the community so that it works as part of the TIF development with the ongoing Putnam block, so that we don't all of a sudden create an island unto itself, because that's a, obviously a critical thing from a lot of perspectives.
The timing, the timing, I think, is, is very, very good right now. And should you agree, I, I think we would, we would begin the process of developing the procedure and the process now, so that when the buildings are close to becoming available, we're already into the, to the RFP process, so that they don't sit vacant for a long time and we maintain them as vacant buildings for a long time.
Carson, another follow-up?
What's-
No, oh, sorry.
What's the square footage?
Uh-
About?
The Depot Street garage, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I-
We did know when we were looking at the plans that maybe doing something-
It's got to be a hundred by eighty?
Oh, boy.
That's okay, I was just curious.
It's, it's larger than it appears. When you're inside, it doesn't look that big, but when it's empty, it's, it's larger than, than you think.
I hate to open and close on a subject, but I, I see John's sitting here too. It's just, there's, there's just so much potential in kind of launching a really strong marketing campaign or reaching out from a business perspective to try to say, you know, here's your chance to, you know, have access to a wonderful facility for, for any type of entrepreneurial venture or what might, you know, whatever they want to do. But here in thirty days or sixty days or even to October, it's going to take some time to kind of get this thing with, with legs on, and especially if we're looking at it from just a blank whiteboard perspective right now. Not to jump into the weeds at all, but have you given any thought or should be giving thought to, if you're going to put this out to a committee to be reviewing, it probably should be a wider selection of individuals than, you know, the town level or the Select Board level. You might want to get some, a variety of individuals to be reviewing those proposals as they're coming in. So, I would just suggest that we, we take a wide look and we start to pick the committee for that.
Good idea, Carson. Do you have a reaction to that, Mike?
It sounds it, yeah.
Well, they could be, they could be people that are potential-
Do you know what I have a reaction to? Oh, I, I fully agree, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
I mean, you have a lot of people in our community that are either, you know, venture capitalists or, you know, entrepreneurs themselves or people in the industry where I just think they could offer a lot more to this decision than, you know, I'll use myself, than I could offer this as a Select Board member. I just, I think it's important.
That's a good point, that's a good point.
Yep.
Without a vote, do I hear a consensus at least to move towards discussion on number three or the third option?
Yeah, consensus would, would be great, it would, and, and I'm assuming if you're saying yes to this particular dress, then you would be saying yes to a similar approach to the Orchard Road property.
Let's hear about Orchard Road.
Separately, okay, very good.
Yeah. Before we leave, is that a fair analysis or-
I think they're really different.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. Okay, I think it's number three to move on.
Yes.
We don't want to waste your time, and I think you would be.
Yes, no. Thank you. So, Orchard Road sort of presents an entirely different circumstance in terms of the potential for that property. Of course, now it houses a very old garage in a not-so-old, relatively new, Stuart, you probably can tell the, the day that it was built, but the salt shed, which is located there. And there are some unique circumstances relative to that property that has to do with the, the public facilities that are butted or across the road. And of course, I'm speaking of Molly Stark and the BSD and the Bennington Rural Firehouse. The Bennington, the Firehouse currently uses some of the property, and so they, they sort of have, I don't want to call it a vested interest, but they, they have an interest in the property because it, portions of it have been made available to them in the past. The, the BSD, and we have not had conversations with either entities, but the BSD certainly has issues associated with parking and recreation space and maintenance facilities. And so, we might have conceivably two eager parties interested in the property. I'm not presupposing that by any way, because those decisions would be made by those organizations. But I think our, our first consideration might be, as good neighbors, to ascertain whether the BSD or Bennington Rural would have an interest in the property. Now, that goes to Tom's point, which is that that would keep the, the property off the tax rolls. And so, the other alternatives would be, not unlike the proposal for Depot Street Garage, would be to seek proposals for use of the property, which would be made available for sale. But rather than just putting it on the market, we'd, we'd be able to control the outcome by either establishing specific criteria for the property or, at the very least, determining what might be available within the current zoning of the property, which is multi-residential, and to consider a sale to a developer who might move in, in those particular directions.
How, how many acres do you have, Mike?
Stuart?
Oh, God, I wish I'd, I'd thought to look that up. I, I don't know off the top of my head, I'm going to guess it's approximately two and a half to three acres. As far as the salt shed, will that be moved to the-
No.
The new loan, you'll keep that? No, the salt, the salt shed and the adjoining building, which was recently renovated, would remain. In fact, the old garage would remain, but I, I'm not sure that any intended user of that facility would keep it for a long time. I, I should note that there is a monitoring well on that site that has been monitored now probably in excess of fifteen years. There was some contamination with some buried gasoline tanks adjacent to the building, which have long since been removed. But there, we're down to testing the one well, and the material in it fluctuates every year. I think this is the last year and the state's going to release us to close the well and, and move forward, but we have not received that as yet. And, and what we're finding in there are gasoline byproducts basically that, that are hanging in the site. And this well is on the southeastern corner of the property, southwesterly corner of the property, I'm sorry, the downhill side away from the garage.
Four point five, three acres.
Thank you.
According to- You've re, you've rejoined a discussion, Joe.
Yeah, I rejoined the discussion, right.
As far as the Depot Street, I remember there, there was a gas pump outside on the, what was it, the northern side of the building. Has that been removed or is that still underground? I believe, I believe all of the underground tanks associated with the town's operations have been removed years ago.
Staying with the third, with Orchard Street Road, I'm sorry. We have the three options again, more or less. And there's not to say that you couldn't, following sort of on what you said, how they might dovetail with that, you know, the clean slate, go with it, number two, which basically creates the, the interest. And then if there is absolutely none or is not, not something that we're comfortable with, then you can potentially go to number three.
I think that would work.
Then you could keep your options open, as it were.
I mean, and Mike said we haven't had discussions with, with the Rural Fire District, but in, in fact, I have had a conversation with the current president of the, the Prudential Committee. Because the research that I did several years ago seems to indicate that, that we have allowed the fire department to build onto what is our property. And my conversations and my thought processes would be that, that if in fact that is the case, we would most likely, or I would most likely recommend that that property be given to the Rural Fire District as a show of good faith for the years of usage. But that deed research hasn't been completed, this was prelim, very preliminary work that I did years ago, when we were looking at the salt shed and its location. So, I'd, I'd have to follow up on that. But I have had that one conversation to indicate that there may be, we'll call it encroachment, but it's encroachment that has been allowed by the town.
Hiccup. Okay. I, I like option two. My first thought is, you know, if, you know, being neighborly, to maybe start with a conversation with the superintendent or the BSD board to see if they are interested.
I, I think, I think Tom's, Tom's idea is a very good one. We start with option two to see if our, our butters and our neighbors are interested. If, in fact, they're not, then you move to number three and see where it takes us.
Yeah, just the nuance that I think what we're saying is of the three bullets in number two, maybe the first and second bullet could come together. It feels to me like that's a particular school system that we need to do everything we can to really help out. So, giving away adjacent land unnecessarily seems like a mistake at some level, on the one hand. On the other hand, if they don't really need it and something great could happen there, it'd be wonderful. So, it feels to me like the, the conversation would be with the Rural Fire Department and the school district, what do you really need or what do you anticipate needing and, and how might this property help you? And not just, you know, do you want this property, but what do you specifically need? And simultaneously doing a, a, an RFP that would ask people not only to give us some great ideas, to harness the creativity that Carson was talking about in the last subject, but also to maybe work with feathering in these two other entities. So, it might be that a really good proposal came to us with a, with a component that would help expand the fire department a little bit and make, make some playground space for the school and do whatever entrepreneurial thing they were doing. So, I do think we can take those first two bullets and it feels- So I do think we can take those first two bullets and, and it feels to me like the auction is a distant third, in my opinion.
That's like a last-
I'd almost rather land bank that than auction it at this point.
What's it zoned?
Multi-residential.
What, what residential?
Multi-residential.
Multi-residential.
Four apartments, basically.
Okay.
Multifamily uses.
Okay, because I, you know, there's a school across the street and I know it's in here that it would have to be compatible with, whatever one in there has, would have to be compatible to be across the street from a school.
Right.
Obviously, to take safety into consideration. Would Rock be interested in it? It's not directly adjacent, but it's awfully close. I just didn't know if they would need to be included in the possibility of people that might be interested in the property.
Well, that would include all of the three public entities along that stretch of Orchard Road.
Yeah, Bennington housing authority abuts this property at the rear.
That's right.
True.
That's right.
Yeah, it seems like that the proposal, the request for proposal could be rather open-ended on that and to see what, who needs what in that area and how could we get the most out of, most value out of that.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Carson?
No, it's nice to hear all the ideas.
Yep. But to think of the, the two properties, this has less entrepreneurial opportunities.
Yeah.
And we should recognize that going in.
Yeah.
For the other is the core and really I think it's critical that we do get something that maintains the integrity of the process as it develops going forward.
So could we put off the auction, option for now and just have that-
It's off the table.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have the bonded anticipation borrowing motion that we'll have to discuss.
This is, this is a bond anticipation note for $2.2 million. This is the initial borrowing from People's United and it's called bond anticipation because we anticipate that we will take the full amount to the bond bank when the time is appropriate, which will be later, late June, early July. And this money would then be paid back to Peoples. But this allows us to acquire the property at 1.7 million at the end of this month. In fact, May 31st, the closing will occur. And it gives us an additional 500,000 to begin the renovation of the property with an eye to perhaps occupying it in some small way early on as we move through the process. This, this will be a heavy construction project when you think about installing floor drains and the appropriate pollution control, sediment control that goes with that, as well as adding some additional air handling to the interior space because it will be occupied by vehicles. And we're also currently awaiting a wetlands decision because we'd love to be able to access the building from the very westerly portion, which is now wooded, so that you could drive straight through the building and out into the easterly side. So, but this gets us going. It does require a motion to waive the reading of the resolution to approve the bond anticipation note and agree, I think there's an agreement at the very end about non-abertage. There are three places for the board to sign. We will collect the treasurer and the town clerk's signature tomorrow, should you all agree to this. And then the last document, Peoples will be opening a separate account for this money. And so this requires the approval to authorize the board chair to sign opening the account and as a notary, I can then notarize his signature. And this money will be kept in a separate account at Peoples United, so we don't end up commingling with our other funds.
Can you have it as one vote, one motion?
I think so.
Okay. Could I have a motion for purposes of discussion? And that was a motion to enter into this agreement in anticipation of the bonding going forward, which is, okay. I should leave it at that for now. Second, discussion on that.
Stewart, it's, it's times like this that I really miss sharing on the, on the board. But is there anything, I've, I've been through this, but it's a pretty heavy reading. Is there anything besides what you've highlighted that's unusual or out of the ordinary or different from other bonds that we've signed in the past?
Absolutely nothing. In fact, we're, we're borrowing this money at the incredible rate of 1.55%. So interest rates have remained low. It's an ideal time for us and, and this, these documents you will see again when we move to the bond bank. You'll see very similar, similar notes and similar resolutions. The only difference being this is a bond anticipation borrowing and the other will be a bond borrowing.
Thank you.
They wouldn't want to be good community citizens by extending that over 20 years at that rate?
We'll, we'll see. The bond bank actually is pretty, has been pretty attractive recently as well. So it'll be interesting to see how, how well those rates come in. We're, we're pretty excited about the timing of getting this one.
How long do you expect the interim, the noble last?
I expect this will be resolved probably no later than the end of July, first part of August. The bond bank usually goes out in June with their awards, generally no later than early July. So it won't be around for too long.
I think it's important that the community knows this is all done, it was consistent with the vote, not, or no changes to what the community has already voted in March. This is just to get us in the process going forward. So is there any more discussion? Having heard the motion and the second, all in favor of the motion divide by eye.
Aye.
And that does have a six to nothing. Any objections?
All right, let's go home.
Nope. Manager's report this side.
Yes, manager's report. I really don't have any action items for you tonight. Donald, you had asked about a board calendar. I was able to find one that I had done several years ago. This, this calendar is the basic of what you, you should look for every year from us. And, and I think what we should do periodically is, is expand it and flush out other dates where we, we're doing special things like this October with the bond vote, that kind of thing, so that we continue to keep this and the board updated as to where we think we're going. But this, this is basic, this is the basic, what you see every year from us.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming up with that.
I was lucky that I found it.
So, you know, Stewart, I, I really appreciate the fact that you came up with this and I think it will help us and the community a lot to know what's coming down the bike when we think about that. The thing with the rescue squad last year, part of that was difficult because it came up late. And so the more we can get things to come in, in a logical sequence and in, in good timing, I think the better. It, it would be great if we could also have on this some of the things that we know are important but aren't, aren't quite up there with setting the tax rate or something like that. And I'm thinking of the survey and the, some of the other-
I didn't attempt to flush it out at all.
Right. So I guess the question is, yes, we look at scorecard survey, things like that, that we, that are important to us. You know, I'm not sure how the board would like to do this, but it feels to me it should be a, a document that's useful both to us, but also accessible to the general public. And maybe we should, I don't know, should we take a stab at it with Stewart and see if we could come up with something for the board to look at or what's the-
Put it on the town's website.
It will, it's going to get there. I'm, I'm just thinking maybe like a subcommittee of three board members to work with management to come up with something that is user-friendly, rather than just leaving it to management to do that. Could, could, do I have any volunteers?
That'd certainly be interesting, seeing that through a little bit.
I think Jeannie said she was interested.
I would do it.
Okay. We got three volunteers unless you guys want to preempt. Anyway, it'll come back to us in some kind of a-
Are you, are you proposing that we would add things like the TIF district initiative and big things?
Yeah, you know, I see this more as a, as a loosely guiding document, not a straitjacket. You know, something that we would, that would be really there for our benefit, but also for, so the public could know kind of what's coming and, and when they can fit in on certain things if they, if they want to. It's a little bit of a feeling that we lurch from emergency to emergency. It would be nice to get to the point that we kind of knew what was coming. And I think probably Stewart and Dan have a pretty good sense of what's coming every year, but as twice a month, select board people who do everything else kind of in-between in smaller groups, it would be helpful for us to kind of see the big picture.
I would like to participate. My availability during the day, that was rather limited, so I might not be the best choice.
Well, Jeannie Jenkins also did express some interest. Maybe we could do sort of a rotating gene.
I can do evenings, I can do early mornings, but during the day now. I, I have like an hour at lunchtime.
Okay.
So.
I don't think it's going to be a real difficult-
No.
Process.
Nor, nor does it have to be, you know, extremely precise. It's not a contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think it'd help us all see what's coming up, so we can gear up for it. And also like the folks that come before us for budget considerations, we'll be able to line them up in advance and have a meaningful discussion rather than like, oh, we've got to make sure they're here and it's like an afterthought most. But we have the scorecard and the certain activities that we as a board are responsible for, evaluations. If you want to do that, so that's a plan. And if we can put that on the score, the calendar, that'll be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Good, thank you. That's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you, Stewart.
Thanks, Stewart.
And that's really all I have for the manager's report.
Other business.
That's just Donna.
But if you would pass it to Donna.
That's yours.
Other business.
Oh, I just wanted to speak for a moment on the incredible success of Youth Appreciation Day. The weather cooperated. I was up there for about an hour at the end of the day and no one seemed to want to leave. So all their hard work definitely paid off. They, they said there was a steady flow of people. The age groups that were represented was much broader. I don't know if anyone else went up there, but it was, I think they were thrilled and I was thrilled to see the success because they worked really, really hard. So it's getting legs and I'm sure it will do nothing but improve year after year.
Thank you. Great. Carson?
That's all I have. That's just Donna.
I just wanted to bring up one piece that the meeting opened with, with Mary Morrissey speaking briefly, just in respect to the, the water board and different projects and the information she brought and then the very concise information you brought back to her. Stewart, thank you for that. More recently on, on Facebook, through the Bennington banner and some other news outlets, it was just kind of reminded the community that there was a $15,000 kind of fine that went, you know, Bennington's way. And Stewart, thank you for describing that in more detail of actually the breakdown and what it represented. But I just want to continue to bring up that, that kind of in citizens in general, we don't always look all the way down the road as far as what lies ahead. So this, this map, when it relates to important things coming the select board's way, I just think we should keep the community as most informed as we can when it comes to the wastewater treatment plant and, and that number that is going to go up, you know, to be bonded. I, I know it's going to happen, but no matter what, the community will respond with surprise. And I think the more we can avoid that, the more prepared we will look as a select board and the more prepared even though you are, the, from a town leadership standpoint. So however we can make sure that's happening on a weekly or bi-weekly basis or something that people become informed or have the opportunity to become more informed, I think is only going to shine a, a better light upon all of us. And I don't think it's for anyone's fault, but I would just welcome suggestions.
Well, what, what, what we hope to do, and of course, time is of the essence, thanks in part to the assurance of discontinuance, but we hope to hold at least two public hearings prior to the vote with the actual design and, and the actual breakdown of the costs and what parts of the project we believe we can undertake and how they will be paid for and what parts of the project will be contracted out and how they will be paid for. We're, we're already into that process, but we really have to, I think from an engineering perspective, Aldridge and Elliot, who are the engineers who are hired to do this job, we have to pick up the pace because we do want to give people plenty of notice. And if the bond vote is to be held October 10th, we need to be able to warrant it by September 10th.
Okay. So those dates, I mean, I, I know this is on CAT TV, I know it's on Facebook. I hope people can stay reminded of those dates and the opportunity to learn more about this subject because-
I'll, I'll continue to, to highlight where we're at in my manager's report.
Great. And so the other piece is, I know that number's been going fortunately down, you know, with 17 million as you referenced a little while ago and then nine and a half million now for a rough proposal. Are there various companies that are being vetted to help drive that number even lower?
At the present time, we're working with engineering estimates based on the construction costs that are basically New England-wide. And, and usually that's what happens is you work with the engineer's estimates. Ultimately, when you bid, you, you hope that the contractors will be very aggressive if the project's a project they're, they're really interested in. The timing of this project is, is, is interesting because it, it's going to be bid just before the wintertime. So you may have a number of contractors who are gearing down at the end of their construction season, who would be looking to get the lion's share of this going in the spring, which may be very advantageous to us.
And I ask those questions just so it becomes, you know, part of the public because we, we want to be able to say that all these chances of people to stay informed because I just think it's so important.
I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I just want to note to you, Carson, that we were talking about this four, maybe two years ago?
Actually, the first time we, we presented the wastewater treatment upgrade to you was probably 2010 and 2011. We did a two-year analysis where the engineers came in and, and came up with a proposal. I think we were prepared actually to go forward with a, a bond issue. It wouldn't have been the 17 million that the engineers had suggested we should spend, but we were, we were trying to get them down into an $8 million range of the highest priorities that we needed to, to accomplish. But if you recall, and maybe, I'm not sure any of you were on the board at that time, but then all of a sudden, the state came to us from the drinking water quality side and said, "Look, Southern Ramon College needs municipal water. You folks are looking at a, a tank on the south end water line to solve your pressure problems. You are currently out of compliance. If you two come together and work at this project together, the town would gain the priority points that SVC had and move us to the top of the list." And it was the board decision at that time to push the wastewater treatment facility aside because we were functioning very well. I mean, our reports have been good or excellent for decades. So there, we didn't know what was coming, unfortunately. And so it was a conscious decision to put that aside, focus on the south end line and get that water supply project moving. And now that has been done.
That was a lower interest rate that we got.
It was a very low interest rate and, and we obviously were encouraged very strongly by the state to move in that direction because of the problems that SVC was having maintaining good water supply at the college. So from everybody's perspective, it worked out, the bond, bond money's payments, the first payment will be in this current FY 2018 budget that you'll be seeing hopefully within the next two weeks. And we'll be talking about during the month of June as we look at the water and sewer budgets and the rates that are associated therewith.
Sorry if that was a reminder to some people, but I, I mean, I appreciate hearing about that because we're, I'm new in particular and, and it's just nice to be able to be educated on it and hear about it again.
Other, go ahead.
Thank you, Carson. This was mentioned before, but I just love it when citizens really step up and, and work hard on something. And it's been really fun to read this Grow Bennington Initiative thing that was put together by a number of people who kind of came together over the hotel study originally, but, but then eventually began thinking more about some of the things that could happen in Bennington. And it's, it's a great list of ideas. It's a great brainstorm. Some of them, many of them are in part underway, but, but some of them are just plain great ideas and, and I think that this whole group that developed this really deserves a thanks and appreciation for, for putting a little bit of a shoulder to the wheel on, on thinking about some more economic development things. So that was very enjoyable.
Very good point. You know, it's not the Putnam Hotel, but there are ideas and there are some of the low-cost efforts that can really make a significant difference to the downtown. And what I think, and I totally agree with what Donald's saying, is citizens coming forward with their ideas. And so working with the citizens, the board, management, there's no reason why a lot of this can't get done because as a community, the ideas- Because as a community, the ideas aren't just the grand ones, they could be very small. But that just shows there's really an investment by a lot of folks in this community. And that's why it's really, there's a feeling of optimism that I think is pervasive at this point in time. But thanks for bringing it up.
I'll speak with one of the creators and see if we can get on Facebook with the town's works.
Okay, great. Chad?
Just want to remind people at home that Mayfest is this Saturday. Great, Ben, always, you know, dependent on weather, but hopefully the weather right now looks pretty good. Little shameless self-promotion. The football team does a fundraiser, and we've done it now for five years with the Dunk Booth. Lot of fun for the kids, people to come and dunk us. I will be serving a 30-minute to hour-long sentence in the Dunk Booth if people want to come out, maybe around noon or one, but I'll definitely put it out on Facebook when we have a schedule set. But it's a lot of fun, come out, you know, get our schedule for next season. We'll have copies of our schedule there. You can come meet some of the players and talk to the coaches and just have some fun. So if anyone else is willing to want to do it.
I think every select board member should do it.
Send me an email, I'll set you up. I have a lot of open slots.
What about town staff?
Is there a heated pool? It's not heated, no. Thank you to the fire department.
After I've left the office.
So, yeah, I believe the fire department gets it right from the river the night before in that morning, so.
12 to 1, we'll be lining up, Chad.
Thanks. I just have a couple of things. Remember, not too long ago, the board asked the, through the chair, to the town council to come up with a policy regarding the immigration and fair and impartial policing that followed the decision that was made by the town meeting, which was a, basically the reason for going forward with a policy that the town might give consideration to in addition to the fair and impartial policing. The town council has come back, and I just want to, for the record, just so that we know where we stand right now with Stuart, it's kind enough to make this available to me. The essence of it is Rob Wilmington, in providing this opinion, said he did not think that layering a general policy statement by the select board on top of the current policing policy is a sound idea. It would be preferable to provide direction and guidance about principles and then do the policy work as part of a review of the existing policy which addresses these types of issues. And he's stating that from, because of potential liability traps. He strongly, and his firm strongly recommends that the town, to the extent possible, rely on the AG's guidance, which was presented to us in March and was part of the discussion that the town meeting focused on. Also in March, the legislature did adopt, and a law now exists, that this particular point in time requires that certain activity take place before a community or state or a community would be actively involved in immigration enforcement. So I think what Rob is giving us strong and appropriate advice is we do have a police enforcement and fairness and enforcement policy. We shouldn't try to trample on that. We may want to ask the police chief to come in and give us some, a report on that process and what is being done so that we can have comfort that the policy as promulgated by the police department is in fact effective before we decide, as he said, to layer anything on top of that. Any other concerns, thoughts on that, Stuart?
Well, the way I read that is that the next step, so I think, I think it's important to many of us that we really do everything we can on this, on this front. Certainly it is to me. But the way I read this was that we could ask the AG's office to consider our fairness and policing policy once we've decided that that's, once we've kind of gotten up to speed on that.
I actually did have a conversation with the AG's office about that, and they cautioned me that basically they would not want to weigh in on a specific policy, but there was a belief that this law would, that is now passed and become law, would deal with much of what we should have in our policy. And our policy was amended back in 2016 when the first Attorney General's first suggestions came out about fair and impartial policing. So our policy is upgraded to that point, and the only thing that I would assure you is that we'll be taking a look at the new law and making sure that our fair and impartial policing policy conforms to the new law.
Well, and those multiple points that were outlined by the AG's office.
Yeah.
You know, I would like to see those worked into our policy and either.
I can tell you that most of them are there.
Okay.
The majority of them are there, certainly. And, but I just want to, I just want to take another look at the, at the new law that has recently been passed to make sure that we're, we're in compliance with that.
Right. So we have the fairness and policing already in place. We have the new law that's been passed, and we have the suggestions from the AG's office. And Rob has just recommended that we make sure that they don't conflict.
Right. And also that the police department review the policy itself to make sure that enforcement's taking place.
That section.
I got the impression that the reference to department was to, not to the AG, but to the police department. But, you know, I think it's a belt and suspenders. I don't want to be layering, as Rob says, because we want to make sure there's consistency between the policies. And if we create a policy that is not, then we could open ourselves up. But I don't want the community to think that we're just putting, pushing this under the carpet because it's a significant concern that may in fact be expanded upon in the not-too-distant future.
I'll report back to you, folks.
That'd be great. Yeah, keep us posted. I think inclusivity is an important thing for this community.
Is there anything else that we want to talk about? Otherwise, motion to adjourn, there's no executive session.
So, yeah.
Second, all endeavor signify by aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.